There it is. All right. First item on the agenda, approval of 2020 census redistricting for the town of Needham. Theater Eaton Town Clerk may approach the table and once you do, the floor is yours to speak about the census redistricting for the town. Thank you for coming.
Well, every ten years, the federal government does a census and redraws all the congressional districts, the state and senatorial districts, and down to the local level precinct districts. And actually, they did a lot of the work themselves this time, and they sent us maps to approve. I had the final map and I have presented it. I gave it to everybody. And I was talking with Dave Davidson the other night, and we cannot find the changes from the 2010 federal census. So I texted him today. I said, can you tell him? Because I can't find the difference. And he said there were some very minor changes to the town of Needham, mostly precincts I and A, three blocks shifted from precinct G, one block shifted from F and H. So customarily, you have to have your town meeting members run in the annual town election following the approval of the census, which is what's going to happen. My question to elections, and I haven't heard back from them yet, is do we have to notify every precinct even though some of them have not changed? And I'm waiting to hear from them. We usually have to notify them by postcard.
That would save a lot of time and effort if you didn't have to do that.
It would save some money, too.
Money as well. You're right. Yes, that was my first question, and I looked through it as well. And I'm in precinct F, and I know a little bit G, and I thought there was maybe, but it was too tight to tell on this map. So I think we're all in the same boat because that was my first question, what has really changed? But that is good to know. Are there any questions from the board?
So this is one of the configurations that the state gave you.
Yes.
Okay, so that answers one of my questions. And then, yeah, I did. I held the two maps up against each other. And yes, like
Did you find it?
Yeah, well, one of them, I found two areas, one on Tower Hill. Due to the, when a precinct increases in population, it shrinks geographically in order to even things out, which is kind of in a way counterintuitive. But basically, the boundary between I and J has moved a little along Webster Street, a little toward the Heights, and bringing along, I think, I can't, I don't have the other map with me, but I think that it might, the boundary is now near, it's a little closer. You'd have to literally have to put the maps next to each other.
Yeah.
But basically, the map, the, some precincts around, in the area of Lexington, blocks in the area of Lexington Avenue, that's what have changed precincts.
I would have thought J would have increased because of the two Second Avenue apartment complexes that have been built since 2010.
Yeah.
The population, federal population in 2010 was 28,886, and now it's 32,091, bearing in mind that federal census does not include college students at home. They are included at their schools.
And that will also affect, we have an article on the warrant as far as additional liquor licenses. And I know they go by the population going over 30,000 helps us in that regard. But is there a motion on this item? That the board votes will prove the 2020 precinct.
I move that we approve the 2020 reprecincting grant for the town of Needham.
That second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
One, I just, because Mary Ann just came in, and a question that had been important to me was this map that we received, unlike past years where the clerk's offices had to kind of move the building blocks, this is one of several options provided by the state. And the changes are relative, there are a few blocks that have moved. As I was saying, there's a change along the boundary between I and J. And I saw a change in the vicinity of the area of Linden Street and Great Plain, of a small area down there, but for the most part. But the question of whether the precincts that are unchanged have to
No, that's, that's an election.
Reelect all their town meeting members. I don't know.
But that's an election question.
The town divided into ten precincts, and no precinct can have more than 4,000 residents in that precinct. And then you take your division, and you can plus or minus 5% to keep within the, as equal as possible.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Yes, that's cool.
So Dan, your question was, does everybody have to rerun even if their precinct didn't change? Was that part of where you were getting? And I think Teddy said everybody does.
Also.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I've got a text in.
My question was, were these maps done in house or did they, no, this is an option provided by the state.
And this is new this year.
Yeah, this is a new way of doing. And then it was, I then mentioned the other thing, which is a subject that Teddy brought up, that there's a question about how to handle the reelection of town meeting members from precincts where the boundary hasn't changed, whether we're all 24, had to run again.
Oh, no, they'll all have to run.
They'll all have to run.
My question is, do we, does the select board have to notify all the voters of their new precincts?
Right. And you reached out to the Election Commission. You're waiting to hear an answer on that question.
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
So what I was trying to understand was if we, if we would be able to notify the people who had changed, you think we might have to notify everybody?
We have had to in the past.
Okay, so that's still to be determined.
And my second question to elections is, can we do this in our annual census? It would be a money saver.
Sure would. Okay.
Is there an effective date that a vote is required?
This, this will go into effect December 31st of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thanks, Ms. Eve.
Thank you very much.
Always nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 2021 Citizens Petition Climate and Ecological Emergency. Stephen Frail and Rebecca Phillips via Zoom. Okay, Allison Phillips is on the Zoom. Mr. Frail, how are you?
Good. Thanks, great. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So we will wait.
To help.
Allison.
For some reason, it won't, it says that you won't let me use the video. Sorry. It says the host has blocked it.
Okay, you're having issues with the video?
No, no, I'm not personally. It says unable to start video because the host has stopped it.
Okay.
Sorry.
We're working, we're working on that. Just give us a minute.
Yeah, no, no worries, no rush. I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. And if not, we will just continue with the audio. Okay, we'll continue. Okay, so we're going to start this agenda item. Thank you for joining us. You're here to talk about your citizens petition, a resolution concerning declaration of climate and ecological emergency. You submitted that for this fall warrant, and I'll turn it over to you. The floor is yours.
Great. I'm actually going to let Ms. Phillips speak to this, and she was the principal sponsor behind it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. And Stephen, feel free to also jump in because, you know, he's put just as much work as I have into this. First, I just really want to acknowledge the help that we've had in making this petition possible, particularly Dan for helping us with the wording, and also Mary Ann. Thank you in advance for the time that you are spending on the Climate Action Plan Committee and the whole select board, really for supporting the Climate Action Plan, and that we acknowledge that you're really already moving and working hard in this direction to mitigate and adapt to climate change in our own town. I'm going to be pretty brief, and we welcome questions. But in essence, the climate emergency plan will really help support the work that is already happening and that will continue to happen, especially with the Climate Action Plan, and especially as Needham will eventually reach net zero carbon and greenhouse gas emissions, which is by law needs to happen by 2050, according to the government, the, sorry, Charlie Baker's, oh, my video can work, Charlie Baker's orders. Great, great to see everybody. So that's that 2050 roadmap bill that was just passed earlier this year. And essentially, what the, what declaring a climate and ecological emergency does is a request that the town of Needham, through the select board, prioritizes work to lower the town's carbon footprint, and eventually, as I said, reach net zero carbon emissions and greenhouse gas emissions, and really just mitigate the impacts of climate change on town residents, businesses, and organizations, and other regions around the greater Boston area. So that's, and it's also important to note, this is non-binding. However, passing it will send a strong message that the people of Needham really care about this issue and expect that the town follow up on its commitments and makes through the Climate Action Plan. And it will really help everybody who is already doing really important green work in this town. And the idea is also to really bind the community together and to continue on after this, this legislation is passed, to actually keep on, on spreading this movement to, to really come together as community, you know, children, adults, people of, in different organizations all around the town to come together and continue to really work on reducing our own carbon footprint and, and continuing to really work to mitigate and adapt to climate change. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Frail?
I think she did a great summary there, so I'll just leave it there and see what your questions are.
Great. Thank you. Discussion.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate that. So what I am, under the assumption that the committee that we're kind of forming and creating, a lot of this information that you're speaking of is going to be something that we are going to take very seriously in the committee that we have created and that we're going to adapt a lot of things and, and kind of push towards that, you know, very goal to reaching that zero and, you know, becoming a green town recently in the last few years. I think that is really sending a message that we are taking this serious, that we hear what you're saying, that we understand that there is, that climate change is very real and that it's happening here in Needham. So I appreciate you being on here, but I know that this is something that we're going to take serious. And I know it's something that we are going to kind of help with our Climate Action Plan, the committee kind of formulate ideas in a process that makes sense for our town to go forward. And I think Mary Ann can probably speak a little more, or I don't mean to call you out, but.
Thank you, Marcus. Discussion, Mary Ann?
So while I agree in principle with this, it's not clear to me how it necessarily adds to what we're doing. And I, I guess I, I'm just going to say, I just have a bias that says I tend to not be in the performative action category. I tend to be in the real action category. That's what I like to work on. So I do worry a little bit about this is not something that's really changing anything that we're doing in this moment. I do also worry about, is there some, well, you know, I don't know. Is there some signal that that sends that says that this is the organizing principle for everything on our budget, which I actually don't think it should be either. I think there's a balance still to be made with the understanding that we are going to be committed to meeting those climate goals. And so we are going to need to organize and figure out what does that mean relative to where we were in 1990, how we're getting to 2050, and what are the pieces of that? And so from a policy perspective, I feel like the climate committee that we're putting together is the one that's going to provide a roadmap from a policy perspective for the town. It's work that we're absolutely committed to, and I guess I'm still sitting here saying, you know, I don't know this does anything in one direction or the other. That's just sort of my take. And it's not because I'm not committed. I'm absolutely committed. So, thank you. But I do want to thank you for coming. I know you're, you're invested in moving us forward, and we appreciate the work that you have done and are going to do on that. And it's going to take all of us to make this. So that a very good.
May I respond?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I think you're absolutely right. The Climate Action Plan Committee that's being formed today is going to be the one that's going to be advising this body. This body will be making a lot of decisions in terms of how to prioritize. And sometimes that's going to be a financial decision, and sometimes that'll be a climate decision or something else. You know, we're always balancing competing needs of the town. And I think we understand that. This, this particular petition got started right about the same time, I think, the, the select board was considering its goals for this year. And it was a grassroots organization. Ms. Phillips brought together a lot of people across the town who wanted to weigh in on the, on the climate crisis that they, that's the term we use, climate emergency. And, you know, as participatory democracy with a town meeting, it's probably also good for town meeting to weigh in on this as well. We have looked at polls from the Yale Climate, Climate, remember the Climate Communication, I think is what it is. Seventy-eight percent of people in our county believe that climate change is an emergency. Almost 70% think it's already impacting them and others. And close to 60% say that local town officials should be taking more action on this. So I think this is very well aligned with what this select board is already working on. And we'd like to see the town meeting have an opportunity to lend its voice to it. Sometimes it feels like it's, it's an all-soul or an and or a nice-to-get-to. I think many people are hoping that this becomes more of a, a way of us thinking about most of the problems that we're addressing in the town, not necessarily as the deciding one, but as one of the factors that we keep in mind every time we have some sort of major decision to make in terms of the town's investments and priorities.
May I just wonder?
Thank you. Yep. I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you so much. Mary Ann, I want to acknowledge that what you said is absolutely correct. I think that the, the Climate Action Plan is going to be really, really important from a policy perspective in, in reaching that zero carbon emissions. And I totally am on board with all of that. I think the climate emergency is hard to kind of visualize sometimes why it's important. So it's less about, it can inform policy. I'm going to give the example a little bit about COVID. It's not the exact same, but if you can remember way, way back, when COVID was declared a public health emergency, then all of a sudden, people are like, okay, this is something we need to take seriously, and we can direct more funds because it's an emergency. And it's the same thing. It's really important that the language that we are using, it's a climate emergency. And that's what we actually really want people to be aware about. And, and it sends a message to all the towns, not just the select board and all the people in town meeting, everybody who's working on the Climate Action Plan, but so people know that they can, they can join in with this and do work in the town. So it's not just about all of the important people in the town who are already doing work in the, with the committee, the Climate Action Plan Committee, but also citizens to come and step up. And, you know, Wellesley actually declared a climate emergency in fall 2020. And then various other towns, over 25 towns and municipalities all over Massachusetts have declared a climate emergency. And eventually, this is actually going to send a signal, hopefully to the state and also nationally. And there's actually 20,028 jurisdictions right now, and local governments all over the world that have declared a climate emergency. And you could actually see in the UK, from when they declared a climate emergency, that's the whole government, you could see that the issue of climate change went from like number 10 on people's priorities to like number three. They, they had these polls that they did. So it's more really about the whole consensus and people coming together. And then this is going to drive support in the town for any work that you're doing. So it's really a little bit more kind of symbolic in essence. And the fact that it's non-binding doesn't mean that it's going to necessarily influence a major financial decision or this or that, but it's a really symbolic thing that I think is really important for the town and citizens to really have their voice in this and support you as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann?
So, so Becca, I think your example almost put my finger exactly on where my discomfort is with this. The example of the COVID public health emergency, right? You think about that. That started with the World Health Organization. It moved down to the CDC, right? And, and then it moved into communities. And with that also brought federal funding for approaching the problems. It was not symbolic. It was absolutely tangible and real. All right. And, and this is a process that you're describing analogous, but not analogous, right? Because it's starting from the bottom as a symbol, hoping to go up to create something that's tangible and real. Those are two different things. And, and so they are both important in different ways. I'm not sure that the parallel language necessarily helps us in this. I'm not sure what appropriate language is, and I might need to think some more about that. But it's clear to me that for the time being, that most of the problems that we have right now are going to come from us doing careful planning within the town. Yes, we will look to see whatever grants we can get access to, but we know that we are deemed a relatively well-off community, and there is a certain limited set of grants that we have access to. There's a lot that we don't. Okay, so we are going to have to figure this one out and muscle our resources to line up to make the goals that we all have achievable. But, but there is a discontinuity between those two approaches.
Mary Ann, thank you. Dan?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to take a few minutes to speak because this item actually is on our agenda twice, and you're here and get to talk now, and you don't get to talk later. So, and, but I know that what our later on action, which is the board's recommendation to town meeting, is important to you. So I want to take just a few minutes because I think there are areas where we, we are in absolute agreement, areas where we might disagree in some respects, and then there are these policies, there are these procedural issues that we're working through that can easily get our, our good intentions tangled up. I mean, I think the critical area of agreement is human-caused climate change is a serious threat to the well-being of life of all kinds on this planet, especially people, including a lot of people that don't have anything like the resources that people in our, in our neighborhood are fortunate enough to have. So how do we, how do we approach that? And we have, as you've noted, we're creating the Climate Action Committee to develop working plans for us here. And you've submitted the resolution. And one thing I wanted to thank you for, and you mentioned the fact that we'd had some talk about wordsmithing and so on at an earlier stage. The citizens petition process, while it's in the law, can get very messy, particularly with resolutions coming to town meeting. The fact that Steve, that you and Becca and the proponents really got ahead of the game by talking months ago with us about the best ways to write this and align it with the policies and procedures of town meeting and the things the board were working on. I really appreciate that, and I hope that's been, been helpful. Now, we, the board ultimately, I think, is likely to come out. I don't know. The board has, with one or two recommendations, which would be some kind of action recommendation on the resolution, or some kind of a recommendation to refer it, whether to this board or to the Climate Action Committee, which is pretty much the same thing because we supervise that committee. That comes later. But, and I know that you're looking, you'd like to see this go to the floor for, for action and be decided by the members. And I just don't want you to be disappointed if that's not the way that this board ends up pointing. The work that you've done really contributes to moving this issue forward. And, and at the end of the day, as I think I'll probably circle around, if I manage to keep these notes that I've got straight, we're really pretty much in, in the same place. Furthermore, we don't decide whether it gets referred or acted on at town meeting. The town meeting members will decide that. You put it properly in the warrant, the moderator has cleared it as being a proper form. It is the main motion. And if the members want to vote on it in exactly the form that it's in there, they will. If their motion to refer, that will be considered, but the members make all of those decisions. The, the, one of these kind of procedural things that we get into is this question of the declaration of emergency and some of the specifics of the language. And we talked about some of that, some of the difficulties of that in drafting. The moderator, you adopted a suggestion that you got from a moderator, which, which is, I think, is correct now that the moderators explained it to me, but may be intuitively difficult because a resolution, instead of being town meeting decides that there's, says there's a climate emergency, it recommends to the select board that we say that there's a climate emergency. Well, we can do that, but then there's, but you would, it's a little awkward to do that. Usually, town meeting says, we make a finding that this or that, A or B is a problem, and certain things should happen. So it's a little awkward. And then it's awkward for us to make a recommendation about what you should tell us to do. But, and there's a third problem, which is the language of declaring an emergency appears to have potential legal consequences embedded in it when a select board does that. And so it would be probable that whether town meeting approves the resolution or whether town meeting, we have a motion to refer, and town meeting refers the resolution to us, this is all going to go to the Climate Action Committee for reason, for further study, for reasons that I'll kind of, I'll get to. There is one area of disagreement that I just thought I would talk about a little bit because we're going to be working on these issues for years to come. And that, I watched your presentation to the Finance Committee the other night. And there was a question from the Finance Committee, does this have financial implications? And I think your answer was, was fair, but I wouldn't agree with it. The answer that I came, that I got was, well, not really, because we're tying the finances and the, and the environmental to, together, and our goals are to achieve both because in the long run, that's, that's our goal. I think that as we go forward, there are going to be a lot of choices where, as here, we're going to make the best environmental change, choices consistent with the financial realities of whatever it is that we're dealing with. But sometimes the dial points in different directions on that. Take, for example, I'll just pick one off the top of my head. There's not much available in the way of, of electric dump trucks right now. Eventually, there will be, but right now, there isn't. And when they first come out, they're, it tends to not necessarily be a premium, you know, a real value, you know, a high value, value for your dollar kind of thing. On the other hand, it, it works toward the goal. A resolution like that encourages the town in making those decisions to push the needle towards the environmental side. And I think that's a fair statement. And if town meeting were to pass this in its, in its form, or Climate Action, our Climate Action Committee tells us that that should be our priority, then, then that's a weighting that would be very important to me. But when people say it's non-binding, it's not entirely non-binding. It is intended to guide and influence the decision makers of the town, and we take those, we take those seriously. And then the final thing, and this is where I think we, we come back together, but we, we have work to do. I don't really think there's a serious problem here in Needham about the idea of recognizing that human-caused climate change is something that we have to deal with. We may deal, we might quibble about or argue about the question of when to buy the, the solar dump truck. But the goal and the need to do this is recognized pretty much by the, by the overwhelming consensus townwide. That's not true worldwide. In fact, there are powerful forces and institutions, some cynical and some acting on personal belief, pushing back the other way. And it seems awfully hard to, to see how we're really going to meet those, those state targets and those worldwide targets. If we don't have a lot of buy-in from the public, and I think as Becca said, that buy-in is growing steadily. Maybe it grows because of, we hope that it grows because of actions by, like this, by leadership. We also know that it grows by things like having your subway flooded or wildfires destroy your town, or another really catastrophic things that we don't want to see happen to anybody. But we need to get that understanding, and we'd rather have that understanding happen before those catastrophic events happen to people. So a question for me, in all of this, how we work on this resolution, how we work in the Climate Action Committee, what kind of ultimate votes the board takes in terms of stating the town's policy positions and encouragement on climate issues is, how do we build that buy-in by the ordinary citizens here in Needham and nationwide and worldwide? I don't know that we have the answers to those questions, but we have to do it. I don't know that we have the answers to those questions, but we have to do it. And so that's kind of, that what frame, that's what frames my thinking on these issues. And I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into it.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And, you know, I would say I'm, the concerns I'm hearing from my board is where I'm at as well. And it is frustrating to global issue and we take it seriously. You know, when you see other countries just floating the issue. So but, you know, words of meaning, as we always say, have consequences. And I'd like the Climate Action Committee to go through. And I think it's great that you did this because I think it gives a basis and documentation for them to look at these issues and then understand how it impacts us budgetarily, practically, et cetera, as you move forward. But I think bringing this to light and giving a working document that can be used is, you know, however town meeting goes on this is a is a win. So it's appreciated.
May I just respond real quickly? So Dan, I completely agree with a lot of what you said there. I think one of the principal goals of getting this in front of town meeting is to help build that buy-in. I mean, I think there's a lot in this town that we do really, really well on climate change already. You know, I think of the RTS solar panels, I think of the solar panels on the Sunita Williams, the the new DPW building, which has the ground source heat pumps. There's been a lot of really great decisions that have been made over time. I think we're trying to elevate that and and make it more pervasive, those those types of decisions and those types of like thinking things through. You know, everything that we do is not just a financial decision. You know, we have historic building preservation, we have community building, we help our schools, we help our senior citizens, we're looking at low-income housing. All of these require investment. What we're hoping is that when we make all of those decisions, we also think about the climate implications of those decisions because there's often a win-win. Your case, your example of the the garbage trucks, I think, is a good one. I hope that we'll get there sooner or later. But but one of the goals of this this particular resolution is to get the whole community and not just town, the buildings, the the residents as well, thinking along the lines of how can they step up to meet the challenge that we have in front of us? And so that's one of the major goals of it. And that's one of the reasons why we made it non-binding, because we don't want to tie the hands of the town in terms of the decisions they make. But we also do want, when your decisions have budget implications and you need to go back to town meeting, having the town meeting already on record as saying that this is an important thing for for our citizens would be a very big help. I do want to point out, just last point, we did a lot of signature gathering with this. And we got a lot of really enthusiastic support from across the the town. And those conversations were were really interesting. A lot of people were saying, this is great, I want to see more of this. So I'll leave it on that.
That's great.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. And I see Ms. Phillips, I'll just end with this. And then I'll have Ms. Phillips with the final comments before we move on. But, you know, Mr. Ray, your point exactly, when we look at the solar installation at the Jack Cogswell Building that would come to town meeting, you know, we're looking, that has to go back because the original authorization wasn't for that. It's pretty much beyond the scope of that project. So we have to come back to town meeting and now request it. We are hoping in the future that that is kind of a given. If you have any extra money, then you don't have to go back to town meeting. That can be used for that purpose to add on to a building. So it's those kind of incremental changes that we hope to make. And then, of course, with the Climate Action Committee moving forward. So again, thank you for that. And Ms. Phillips, final words.
Yeah, thank you so much for everything that's been said and all of your efforts. Just two or three things I want to address really quickly. One, to Mary Ann's point, I acknowledge that it's not an exact analogy, but I do think that it's important, whether it's symbolic to driving more political action or vice versa. I think declaring an emergency is still really important, in my view. And I think this is because declaring an emergency is, can only really add, in my opinion, to the work that you're already doing. And the fact is that what what the town meet, like town meeting, the select board, the Climate Action Committee, all the work they're doing is going to help us get to net zero. For sure. Individual action is also really important. And I think that's really what we're thinking about is the voice of the people. And we really want that to align with what the town leadership is. And we want to work together. We don't want to be a threat, we want to work together. And of course, there are going to be different implications and different decisions that we're going to have to make. And the fact is that declaring a client emergency really does vary from municipality to municipality. So we have the ability to really use this as a powerful tool in gaining momentum. And it really does, does really make a statement to citizens. I think it can be hard to see sometimes, but the, now, I grew up in Needham. And and then I lived in Needham the past two years. And when you, when you start seeing these street signs all over and you start seeing people that you didn't even know have like a lawn sign out and you start seeing this movement that's beyond just the town leadership, it's really amazing. And I just want to acknowledge like everything that you guys have done already and your support. And I I know that it's never going to be exactly perfect in line with what we all see, but the main thing is that we're all working together and that this can really help in envisioning a a future where climate change is not as disruptive as it is forecasted to be. Thank you.
Great, thank you for those comments. We look forward to working together as well and thank you for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Is there a motion for the consent?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Next. We're good to go. Okay, thank you for that. We received, I think it was today, from Mr. Merz that you're planning on a town meeting referring this back for further study to the Planning Board. But I know, of course, you want to speak to it and describe what the citizens' petition would be. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Merz. The floor is yours, describe your article. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
Are you on mute, Mr. Merz?
It's not.
No, no.
How about now, can you hear me? Hello? Testing, one, two, three.
Okay, do you want to try to log out and come back in? That probably would be the best course of action until we.
Do you have headphones?
This is, Mr. Merz, you can hear, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Merz, you can hear us, all right, yes? Okay, this is the same issue that you had when you appeared before the Finance Committee. So if you know how you solved it then, so do it now. You may, you, a common cause of what you're having, which may not be the problem right now, is if you see your microphone, there's a little up arrow next to it that raises up a menu and allow you to turn up your microphone via.
The joy of Zoom. Why don't we do this? If you want to try to log on, log off and log on. And in the meantime, if we can go to, Kate, can we go to Town Manager and check off a couple small items? And then, Mr. Merz, feel free to interrupt when you get the auto going and just say present or whatever you'd like to say to let us know that you're back. Kate?
So, Mr. Chair, the first item is a discussion of the Transportation Planning and Review Committee. And this is in response to the board's goal to evaluate the role and composition of the various boards and committees in town that are involved in transportation and traffic. At your last meeting on September 28th, you reviewed and discussed the committee charge. And we were asking that you take a vote on the committee charge this time. At the board's request, we've included two citizens-at-large in order to keep our tradition of having an odd-numbered committee in most cases.
That makes a lot of sense and that was our suggestion to get members of the community into this discussion. Is there a motion? I move, go ahead, to the, for the board to approve the committee charge in composition for the Transportation Planning and Review Committee. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion and second, any discussion on this? See, now we come to vote, all the, Mr. Nelson?
Yep, now that we included the two at-large community members, as far as forming that, is there going to be an application process for those members? It's when that comes up, it'll be kind of like it was for the Planning Committee.
Right, we, and we advertised this committee at your request at your last meeting. So it was included in the in the major mailing.
All right, and then is there a?
That was the Climate Action.
Is there a?
Sorry, sorry, we have so many committees. We did the Climate Action Plan out, we will send a different
Okay.
Notice, but so feel feel free to let anybody know who, you know, might be interested in.
You got it. All right, thank you.
Okay, what what is the goal to have that committee filled? We have.
Realistically?
Yes.
Calendar 2021. It is a six-months project, so we're hoping it would just get going. It's it's really an evaluation and an exploration committee and not a long-term.
Thank you.
And I would have said truthfully, I think the other committee members, probably those committees already have something in mind for it, so it's really going to be getting the citizens.
Right.
Right.
Yep, involved, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, come to the vote, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
See, Oscar.
Oscar, can you?
Can we hear you?
It's unfortunate. Okay, let's move on to the part, public participation in meetings policy that we reviewed last meeting.
That's right, also in response to a goal adopted by the board and we recommend adoption of the public participation in meetings policy.
Is there a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I moved that the Select Board adopt the public participation in meetings policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Update to the list of special municipal employees? Pretty straightforward.
Again, at, as the board took action to update the major list of special municipal employees, we had a conversation that as we create new committees, we should make sure that their status gets adopted at the same time. So we would propose that the board designate members of the Climate Action Plan Committee and the Transportation Planning and Review Committee as special municipal employees according to chapter 268A. And I would note, Mr. Chair, that we will be bringing you another recommendation for the Housing Committee that you've been talking about that put that one on the special municipal employee list as well at your next meeting in October.
Terrific. Is there a motion? Three motions.
So I would actually move that we approve the motions as presented at the meeting.
Okay, motions one, two, and three as presented on the agenda fact sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Select Board calendar?
This one should be quick.
Yep.
The board voted to schedule a special election for a select board member for December 7th, which was the night of a scheduled select board meeting. So we would ask that the board reschedule that meeting to December 14th. The other, the only other thing that's unknown at this time is that December 7th was the date for a tax classification hearing. We're trying to see if we can have that at your second meeting in November, which is before Thanksgiving. But it may be necessary to schedule a separate meeting just for the tax classification hearing because it can't be done too soon and it can't be done too late. So the 14th is too late, 22nd or 23rd might be too soon. But more on that, but the the regular meeting on December 7th should not go for during the election.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I motion that we vote to reschedule. It's a December 7th, a December 7th meeting to December 14th due to the special, uh, special election. 2021 special election.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, before we move any further, I think the report and the warrant articles will take some time. Here's what we're going to do. If you're unable, Mr. Merz, to connect, can you either call in? Otherwise, I will put you later on the agenda this evening after.
I think, I think I'm okay.
Okay, perfect, and perfect time, great. Okay, Mr. Merz, the floor is yours to discuss your ADU citizens' petition.
Thank you very much, members of the Select Board. It's an honor to be in front of you. As you guys, I'm sure, know, this is an important, urgent issue for the for the town to address the the larger picture of of affordable housing choice. I will speak briefly about the sort of the background behind this petition. And and as as you know, in discussion with moderator fee and discussion with the petitioners, we have decided that now being a member of this new housing committee going forward to look at affordable housing opportunities across town and formulate a new housing plan with the Planning Board and other representation in town, it's a really important board and a great opportunity. But I would like to speak with you about just the ADU issue and and why we have felt it to be important enough to bring this as a citizens' petition. As you know, by definition, an accessory dwelling unit in Needham is a self-contained small housing unit within the mainly main dwelling unit and intentionally of minimal impact to the character of the neighborhood. The restricted size of the 850 square feet further distinguishes the ADU as a highly valuable commodity in this town. An affordably sized housing option for young people, young professionals and people working in Needham, or perhaps someone downsizing and wishing to stay. At the moment, almost all of those options don't exist and there continues to be a frustrating lack of small affordable housing choices in Needham. The citizens' petition was intended to emphasize this urgency of the critical need for small housing units by advocating for the removal of the residency restriction in our current bylaw. And the Board of Health and the Council on Aging did a lot of research and ultimately were advocates, strong advocates, to consider a less restrictive ADU bylaw in 2019. And their research was really based a lot on the interviews that they did and discussions with the senior community. And they found that they were really, they faced housing challenges to be able to age in place. And an ADU as a rental unit would have been a very helpful option to have. So the data in Needham, the data in Needham shows that we are seeing about four to six ADUs and it's been about 18 months to almost two years in the applications. And they are currently restricted to caregivers and family members. And if one were to take a lot of the data that's been done on ADUs across about 100 towns, it's been, we've reported on, we've showed links to that information. There's generally about a 50% increase if you remove restrictions. But our numbers are so small that the 50% increase is still pretty small. So at the moment, if if you were to do those kinds of planning projections, you would say that adding seven small rental units to to this town every year would actually be pretty important. And by making the ADUs rentable, there would also be some simplification that the building departments need for all the enforcement efforts that they have to go through to to double-check on the residency restrictions. And the other advantage is that the ADUs literally occur all across town. So they really have minimal impact on our neighborhoods. I think another relatively important issue here is, as a town-wide benefit, that the important smaller units that they provide really could serve are on some underserved groups in town, like public sector employees, social services, professionals, service sector workers, daycare instructors, teachers, firefighters, home health aides, seniors and and young families. So there's a, there's a, there is a real need and 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 part of the challenge of this committee is to look at all of the options. And so it was, it felt very good that we take this opportunity with this committee to refer this petition and 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 not consider this separately, but really let it become part of this bigger study. So I I thank you for for the time to let me speak, and I'd like to hear your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mertz. Discussion or questions for the proponent?
Yeah, I would.
Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Glad to hear you, Mr. Mertz.
Well, thank you. Sorry for the technical problems.
The I'm glad to that you're talking about referring this. This is, as you know, an issue that was before town meeting two years ago and decided by town meeting on the merits. But there's no reason not to bring it back, and particularly with the increase, with the focus on taking a look at looking at, taking another look at affordable housing options in Needham across the board makes a lot of sense. And you have every right to have it considered in that in that. But I'd be a little critical in the sense of this, the the chair of the planning board came before town meeting in May and said that they were going to do this soup-to-nuts study of affordable housing in Needham. And this subject matter is entirely within the scope of that study. And a lot of work has been put into this by a lot of people, and now and now we're here. I think it makes a lot of sense to refer it. I would offer the suggestion that the motion to refer should be to the planning board because it's the planning board that created the committee and the planning board that has the oversight over this policy area and and would be the drafting authority and the filing authority for any actual change proposed to be adopted by town meeting to the bylaw. That would be my suggestion.
So to the planning board instead of to the actual committee?
Do the planning. The planning board could actually dissolve the the study committee tomorrow if it wanted to. Whereas if you send it to the planning board, they have to answer to town meeting.
Good.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nelson.
Good.
Hold on, Mr. Mertz. Mr. Nelson?
How you doing, Oscar? Nice to see you. Just want to say I appreciate being here and and kind of explaining this with us and also kind of agreeing with Dan Matthews about referring it to the planning board and having them kind of, I guess, take it into consideration all the work that was put on or that's being put to make this a reality and how serious we take it. And I think, you know, for myself, that is, you know, really affected by this and just the cost of Needham and to be of the affordability of Needham and being a young professional and how I wouldn't want anything more but to be able to stay and live here for as long as possible. And, you know, right now, as as we sit, it's a little bit tougher, you know, for myself and other young professionals to afford to stay here and, you know, you want to be able to be here and thrive in the community and and help and volunteer and all those things. So when I see something like this, I know it's something that the town is going to be addressing in the planning board and the committee that they formed. So referring it back to them, I think, makes a lot of sense and that it could help out with, you know, where we go and how we kind of go from here with this process. But I appreciate, you know, the thought and the effort that you put into this, and I'm anticipating and kind of excited to see where we take it from here and the changes, you know, hopefully that we'll make and and where we go. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mertz? Your hand was up. I don't know if you had any.
No, no, keep keep going. If you have more comments, then I can have a few words.
Sure. Ms. Cooley?
Thank you, Mr. Mertz. I appreciate the motion to refer. I think that is the right move at this point in time to refer to the planning board. At the same time, I do note that when this was put in place a couple of years ago, the town expected that we would see some fifty, eighty use within the first couple of years. And I think my understanding is there's been six that have materialized. So certainly, we haven't met the policy goals that we thought, seven maybe. We haven't met the policy goals that we thought we were going to accomplish. And for all those reasons, and and I think the points that you make, having it go to the committee, but also having it go to the committee in a way that recognizes that a lot of good work has been done and that maybe there is a way to use that good work to yield some results sooner rather than later in a problem that is actually quite complex and sprawling, but just to look at this one particular piece, I think is still good advice for us and hopefully to get closer to accomplishing some of the goals that we had hoped to make happen a couple of years ago. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cooley. And I agree with the comments on the board. I, you know, we were very supportive and I remember the article came back twice to town meeting and then was passed. There was concern at the time of how much of an impact it would have and how those could be rented out and a lot of misinformation. But when it came back to town meeting, we fully supported it, and I do think it can be tweaked. But again, that would be up to the planning board and then through their committee to look at the issue. You know, the concern to me is blurring the lines between a two-family house and an ADU, but also understanding that people do want to live in, you know, with their in-laws or caregiver. They want to have a different living arrangement than maybe what we're used to in town, and we have to give them the ability to do so. I was actually speaking with a business owner who moved to Dover, and he was able, I think he's in his sixties or almost seventy, but he was able to share a how build a house, share it with his daughter and that family, have two wings and, you know, reasonable accommodations for both of them, and it's going to be the ideal situation, you know, for their lives. So we have to look at this, but again, the the path to do that is through the planning board and completely support the idea of referring it back to the planning board for further study. And with that, Mr. Mertz, I will give you the final closing argument as we speak or closing discussion, and then we'll move on. Mr. Mertz?
Thank you for your support and for your comments. All all very good, and and we'll take them to heart and and apply. I think the it's interesting, you you raised the the question about the whether the ADUs are fall into this category or general discussion of two-family. I think there has some clear distinctions with them because of their limited size and and our current bylaw that puts them inside the existing homes. So they literally have no, no character or no effect on the character of the neighborhood, and so they're indistinguishable. And a two-family is is larger, more visible as as a separate, equally sized unit. So I think, I think we meet, we will be needing to be clear when we have these conversations about what are the opportunities for this type and that type. And I think that the ADU bylaw and the support I've seen from and talking with members of the Board of Health and Council on Aging is that there there really were dual benefits sought, one of them being economic to have these be rentable. And I think that's the one thing that I would like to continue to pursue, and I think, as Marian said, not everything needs to get wrapped up in a much more complicated approach because of an affordable housing committee effort will be, will take time, the months, you know, to prepare all that information. And so I think the way we compartmentalize the study and how we create an action plan to give town the tools to address a crying need for affordable housing choice in town, it's just not there. It's going in the opposite direction. If we can pick off or pick off some options that are easier to administer and get going, it will be, you know, be taken into advisement by the committee and and seek all your, the support from from you as well. So again, thank you for your time tonight. I'm excited to be a part of this committee and and go going forward and and I know we have a tall order to to work on changing our housing options and getting getting more choice. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mertz, and good luck with your work on the upcoming committee, and thanks for all your work. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I don't don't want to prolong and and of course, Mr. Mertz gets to have the last word, not your approach, but I I just want to push back a little bit. One of the reasons for the referral, in my point of view, is that I think there's a, there's a great concern that we've lost affordability for middle-class and and blue-collar people in in town. And this affects affordability for market housing, that's housing that's available on the open market, and and it affects subsidized housing as well. And there, but there are a lot of different approaches that can be taken. Each one that anybody works on, in my experience, and everybody's experience is different, but mine is that they each have advantages and they each have some challenges and problems. And so what the best path is, that's going to, that's the work that the planning board has promised to undertake through this and oversee through this this committee. My recollection of the ADU discussion is it's a pretty complicated bylaw, and I'm not sure, for example, speaking to the number of ADU permits that have issued, if it's, if if the caregiver and relative limitation is the one that limits the numbers or some of the other procedural limitations that were put in there in order to prevent what some people saw as possible abuses. The process for applying for the ADU is not simple, as I understand it. And if we're going to look at ADUs, we may need to find, looking at a little broader, and it may not be quite as simple as some of the of the advocates have suggested. On the other hand, there may be some other things such as increasing the number of the opportunities for as-of-right multifamily housing in in portions of the town near commuter rail or whatever that might, for example, be equally even simpler and and offer greater relief and opportunity sooner. So I'd like to see the the work, from my point of view, go to be included in the work of the committee. I think the committee seems to be a good one and 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 takes the work seriously. The work is challenging, but I would say not necessarily have preconceived notions about what the simplest or best is before we before we get into the evidence of it. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And we go on and on and on about housing and all the different aspects of it. I do want to end this conversation and just say, as far as ADUs are concerned, that will be part of the conversation of this committee, along with the other areas of housing and two-family by right, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Mertz, thank you for coming in. Look forward to seeing you at town meeting. Next item on the agenda, planning board discussion on zoning articles and positions on warrant articles. Lee Newman is coming to us through Zoom. Chairman Alpert is here. How are you? Nice to see you. Nice to see you. And Vice Chair Block, nice to see you as well. Gene McKnight, very nice to see you. Thanks for coming. I guess the first thing I'd like to do before we go any further is the last item we just discussed on ADUs, we just talked really much around you and said, okay, well, you should really refer this back to the planning board. I would like, as you go through the warrant articles, to take that first, and then we can go through the other articles, because now that it's fresh on our mind as we move ahead. So the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Early. I wasn't planning to speak about the ADU article, but the planning board, and correct me if I'm wrong here, the rest of you. But the planning board, I believe, did it did have a vote to not support the article, but this was before we knew that the plan was to refer it back. And I can't speak for the board because we haven't, we haven't discussed it as a board, but but it sounds like referring it back is is the best way to go. Part of the reason why we voted against it was because this is part of the charge of the committee that we have formed to to look at the affordable housing aspects for the entire town. Making changes to the ADUs is certainly on on the the agenda for that committee, part of the charge for that committee. And we we hope to come forward with with a good plan. You know, to to make this town more amenable to affordable housing. ADUs may be part of that, may not be part of it. I mean, there are a lot of issues to discuss. And and a big question, which is really a question for town meeting, is what do we want to see in in this town? I'm I'm going back now to more than two years ago, when when the planning board was talking about ADUs, we were concerned. We, there were members of the planning board who were concerned about turning single-family houses into essentially two-family houses. There was concern about the potential abuse of turning the units into, at that time, Airbnb's. Now we have Verbo and or VRBO, and and who knows what other competitors will come along. And yet I think the committee should be open to the possibility that the town might be amenable to those to those uses, even even though the planning board rejected them a few years ago. So yes, there's, there's a lot of room to study this. We're very excited to have Mr. Mertz on on the committee. We think that he's going to bring a a a well-reasoned voice and 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 help this committee along.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So why don't we go through the the two articles, one being the Chestnut, or it's called the zoning setback, Chestnut Street, and then, of course, the other one, the outdoor dining, whatever order you'd like to take them in.
All right, then, I I I will speak on on the Chestnut Street, and then I'll turn it over to my vice chair, Mr. Mr. Block, who will who will speak on on the on on the outdoor dining. So the the purpose of the zoning amendment for the for the Chestnut Street Business District is to correct an error that has come to light. And it's, it's an historic error. It's by reason of multiple changes to the zoning over thirty years. And 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 something slipped through the cracks. Originally, this town had a business district, and there were multiple areas of town that were designated the business district, and the business district had various rules, various setbacks, and it had a ten-foot front setback. In nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen ninety, the town created the Chestnut Street Business District. And one of the reasons why we separated that out from the other business districts was because we wanted to create a twenty-foot front setback along Chestnut Street, but maintain the ten-foot setback on the side streets. Over the years, the other business districts became their own separate districts. There are now, let me see if I can find it quickly in my notes. There we're down to one business district, one area that's called the the Business District, and that's along Highland Avenue between May and Rosemary Street. And all the other business districts in town have become the Center Business District, the Highland Avenue Business District, the Avery Square Business District. I could go on. There are a lot of them. They all have separate rules. What we didn't realize was that through all of this process of all the business districts having, creating their own rules in the Chestnut Street Business District, somewhere along the line, we lost the ten-foot setback. We had an issue with with a property where it was discovered, well, it was discovered. The the building inspector reached the conclusion that that on the side streets, there's actually a zero-foot setback. There's still a twenty-foot setback along Chestnut Street. The planning board looked at it and had to agree with him, that that's, that's the way it's worded. So the purpose of this article is to reinstate that ten-foot setback that everybody had been operating under, everybody had assumed, ma- making it formal. So that's basically the guts of what this amendment is for. While we're doing that, since there's now no longer multiple business districts, we're now just making a technical change. Instead of having a business district as a definition with a small b and a small d, we reference the business district with a capital B, capital D, meaning that area along Highland Avenue.
In all other areas, this will be corrected for, so this doesn't happen in other.
Not that we know of.
Districts that you know of.
Not, not that we know.
Okay. And ten feet is what was really intended. We all, the board thinks of when this.
And we've been operating on the assumption that it was ten feet all along as for the past thirty years.
Sure. I think we all have. Yes, correct. Okay. Any discussion on this warrant article? Mr. Nelson?
So just a quick question. When you say not that we know of, does that mean that we have to do some more digging?
We haven't, we haven't studied it. We haven't gone back to actually look.
Okay.
So I'm trying to, there are now nine separate districts
That have to be looked at.
That that either have to be looked at or as as an issue comes along, we'll discover whether whether there's a problem, but we're going to assume for the time being that the original intent is there and if we have time, we'll take a look at the nine business districts.
Won't happen unless something occurs in the sense.
Probably not.
Mr. Robert, may I may I add something on that question?
Yes, Mr. Mathew.
Because I had during the time this was being drafted, some telephone conversations with our Planning Director, Lee Newman, and it was my it was my understanding impression that she did go through the zoning by law to make sure she that he should caught any place where there would be a problem. Now, you know, she could speak for herself. We could double check that for sure, but it was my understanding that was the case.
Okay, well, there's one way to clarify that. We have Ms. Newman here on. Oh. No, no, but I see her on the right, Mr. Matthews, Lee Newman. It's on the list, right, the first one there. Yeah. Yeah. There you are. Thank you. I missed a spot. I didn't want to. I didn't see you on Zoom. Welcome to the meeting. Thanks for joining us. Okay. Ms. Newman? She's trying to connect. Okay. While she's connected, are there any other questions before we iron that out? I guess that was my question, too. How it applies to other districts, and if that is something, if it didn't, then we could move to the annual.
Ms. Newman is there.
Thank you. Ms. Newman, I don't know if you heard the question. Did you hear the question?
So to the question as to whether or not we reviewed the front step back rules for the other business districts to make sure that they were accomplishing their underlying intent. I I did look at that, and this was the only district where this discrepancy or was was present, and that's the discrepancy that we're now correcting for the Business District.
Great. That answers the question. Thanks, Ms. Newman. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Nelson, I'm sorry that I couldn't answer your question.
It's all right.
But I'm glad that I was here.
Came out eventually. Okay, so the next item is the outdoor seating. Mr. Block?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm at a unique disadvantage in talking about this because my mother tongue is Canadian, and I think I pronounce out like eating an oat, a steel cut oat. And so, you know, you can't deny that when we're talking about outdoor seating, so I do intend to correct myself. I think we've all learned. I I appreciate that reference. It was my beer of choice in in college. So so taking a step back, as you all know very well, we already have as Article 6.9 in our zoning by law, a facility to enable outdoor seating for restaurants. It can go through as a matter of public property to the select board, and there's a process for the select board where outdoor seating would be on public on public property. On private property, there is a procedure where, under certain circumstances, the applicant or restaurateur can apply to the planning board through a minor site plan review process, a minor project which would enable a more expedient process, a fast track process. And that was put in place where outdoor seating would be from April 1 to October 31, and where the proposed space for outdoor eating would not be in a landscaped area in a parking lot or in a driveway, and where the outdoor seats themselves would not actually increase this overall seating capacity for the establishment by more than 30%. And then it's a slower process, a major project, site plan review process, which is a slower process for a special permit. If a restaurateur is applying for outdoor seating on private property, where they want to A, extend the outdoor seating beyond the April 1 to October 31 window, where they do want the space, the eating space, to be in a parking lot or driveway. I think it's referred to as a drive aisle, and yeah, that's effectively what we're talking about, and perhaps in an otherwise landscaped area. And then, of course, where the total capacity of seating would exceed 30% as a result of the additional outdoor seats. Those scenarios would all require a special permit. And and what we've learned through the through the pandemic was there's obviously high demand for safe eating alternatives. And some of the and there was an opportunity to improve our zoning to achieve several things. First of all, as you know well, the on public property right now, under the with under the existing by law, it's really only applicable to a sidewalk. It's not applicable to rather, I apologize. It it's it's applicable for sidewalks and not for municipal parking lots. So what one of the things that had happened during the pandemic is the governor was able to suspend certain state and local requirements to enable what we've come to appreciate as the current outdoor seating. And so we're looking effectively to extend those improvements beyond this period of the pandemic because those the stake, the governors, the the governor's orders expire before town meetings, before our town meetings. We want to make sure that we're prepared. So there are five, there are five main changes to the zoning that we're looking to do. One will will apply this outdoor seating not just to restaurants that have a waitstaff, but restaurants like Hungry Coyote, for instance, that does not have waitstaff, and yet we refer to those restaurants and all restaurants as eat in restaurants. And so that so we're enabling outdoor seating for those types of restaurants as well. Also, we're allowing it beyond that April 1 to October 31 window where where practical, obviously, consideration is going to be given by DPW and and other parts of town government as well. This also enables outdoor seating on public areas, not just on sidewalks, but also on public parking lots. And then we also are enabling the planning board to have its own facility to hold public hearings to ensure that with outdoor seating, we can accommodate for public safety, and we can also accommodate for restaurant for parking for other restaurants and other types of retail and service businesses that they're also accommodated for in terms of parking parking. So the final purpose of this amendment is to advance our Nomen culture, which had been referred to before as the planning, as the the Board of Selectmen, to the select board. So we are correcting those provisions as noted within the that by law 6.9. So my only final comment that I would say as an individual member, as a resident of town, is that this has really created a very unique opportunity for community building. There have been countless times when I've sat with my nine-year-old son and had an ice cream or with my son and my wife, and we've seen people that we otherwise would not have had an opportunity to to actually engage and connect with one another again. So the fact that Needham has taken a leadership position to get out ahead of this, I think speaks volume to the character of our town, and I'm grateful for the opportunity as this the planning board is to be able to work in collaboration with you on this.
Great. Thank you for that and for your work on this, and I agree, it's been a terrific community amenity to have it on both public and private property. Discussion. Marian?
Thanks, Adam, for that description. One of the questions that I have, and something that we're, I think, going to talk about a little bit later, that that came to us from the merchants or from the restaurant owners, was a question about whether the temporary outdoor season could be adjusted so that it runs from April 1st at least through the end of November. My sense, I'm just going to say, and I know that we'll be coming back to this later. My sense is that there's some hesitation until we better understand all the factors related to plowing with making it earlier. But generally, that period through the end of November is considered pretty safe. December gets to be a different topic when it comes to plowing. So again, it's back to the plowing discussion, but but that was a question that came from restaurants. I do think when we sit here today, right, there is that question already. In theory, they would be picking up their tables and chairs within another couple of weeks. What we know with respect to the pandemic is that people are, in fact, at this point, quite hesitant about going back to eat indoors. But but I do think this is more than a pandemic issue, because the real thing that we learned is that it's not just a question of high demand for safe eating alternatives, as you said, but people like the ability to run into their neighbors.
Yes.
And that the idea of eating outside is one that I think the town really welcomed and embraced, and has been very clear that whatever's going on, they actually liked that, and they hope it will continue. So the things that we can do that can support that in in all aspects, I think are still open questions. So that's I don't know where specifically in the language that's stated, but I think I understand that it's somewhere in the zoning by law, and I guess my question is if we were to wish to change that to run through the end of November, would that require another amendment? I'm just asking right now because I'm curious.
On the on town floor.
That you make a change.
Right.
You mean if it came up on town floor, could we make an amendment to this?
Well, I'll just let me frame it. It's my because we had the same question. The question is, is there an expedited process that if someone wanted to change that in this current language, if someone wanted to change that from October 31st to the end of November, that maybe with a minor site plan review or a letter, instead of having to go through a long process, that they could get that changed pretty quickly? On our side, they can, because it's in the, you know, the public way, we have flexibility. The question was, does the board, and I think I did receive an email that they might be able to kind of do it quickly without changing the bylaw, but that that's the question, and it might be one for the Lee Newman or
I I would probably defer to Lee, because right now, the way that this is constructed is that the minor project site plan review accommodates this expedited process specifically for that window, April 1 to October 31, but all deferred to Lee.
Okay.
And a question before we.
Yes, Mr. Mathew.
Are we talking about for this, something that would affect this year's licensing operations or next year's?
So we're really talking about for future. This year, we do have more flexibility because we're still under the pandemic rules. Whereas but we're trying to set really a course of action for the future.
Okay.
But we're making those changes now, so that's why I'm trying to.
No, I'm I'm all good with that. It's just that it really isn't anything. If they haven't got the authority to do it now, they're not going to get it before November 1st, because any bylaw change has to go to the ADU.
Right.
That's correct.
As long as we're talking.
Right. We're talking about next year and just kind of being out in front of this. Ms. Newman?
Yeah, so Adam has it correct. I mean, the framework for this is that the season for the expedited process is between April 1st and October 31st. And then as relates to planning board, if you're going to go outside that limit, it triggers really the major project. You're stepping outside of the foundational rule.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess where I'm sitting, I would like, and not for this town meeting, I would like to see all these amendments on town meeting floor, but it would seem that we have time if we did, and the board was interested in this board, to get something maybe for the annual town meeting to give some flexibility, because if I'm a business owner and next year I want to extend, and you think about going up north, right, Vermont, New Hampshire, they even have snow falling, and you're you're eating in in December on your own property. But the question is, is there a quicker way to get this to move on now that we have that framework? But that's just something I think, maybe not for this article, so I think to amend it would be messy, but as we move to next year, that's something the board would be interested in.
That's understandable.
Thank you. Thank you. Marian?
Yeah, because I the one other thing that is, we've tried, part of what this does is try to create parallel processes between what the planning board has jurisdiction over and what the select board has jurisdiction over, so that a restaurant can expect similar experiences in dealing with both boards, whether they're on public or private property. I think that's a good value to have and to maintain and to work hard to keep in sync.
And I would say that it works in concert. I've seen the draft policy that the select board has prepared for outdoor seating, and I think this zoning by law amendment works well, works well in concert with that that policy.
And under our policy, we can be flexible to do that extension. So I agree with the idea. Great. I think it's it's a good starting base. I do see Mr. Jacobs here. I just did wanted to make sure that he's part of this discussion as a member of the planning board. Can we pull him over? I'm not calling you, Mr. Jacobs. I just want to make sure that you're part of the conversation. Discussion? Dan? No? Okay.
No, no. Thank you.
Mark? Excellent. I want to thank you unless you have any further comments. I think we're very supportive of of this idea, and as you said, community building, and I think it's it's a good we had a test front, a pilot, horrible circumstances, but moving forward, I think it's great for everybody involved. So thank you for coming in.
Great.
See you coming.
And it's good to be here before the select.
That's correct. It's good to be here. Take care. Take care. Thanks, Lee. Thanks, Natasha. Thanks, Marty. Okay. Next item on the agenda, response to community recommendations update. Chief Schlitter, Deputy Chief Baker, welcome. Good evening. Nice to see you.
You as well.
Thank you. So we are here for an update, and we received some information about what has been done since we had a prior discussion on this. I will turn it over. If you could walk us through what the updates are from your department.
Thank you for having us tonight. I'll go through the recommendation, the updates, the ones that we've updated since the last time. The meet regularly with stakeholders was the recommendation groups and communities, it's called, to build mutual trust and respect. We've set up quarterly meetings with Needham Housing residents to discuss policing and services that the department may provide. I'm also going to be a panelist on the Diversity Summit in Needham in November. And I did meet with some of the leaders of New Wari to discuss the challenges of outreach to our BIPOC community members in town. We've also spoken with the Human Rights Committee, working with the Assistant Town Manager to assist in the potential creation of a response team to bias-based incident. I recently reached out to the Indian Community of Needham to meet with the group and discuss the Needham Police Department and answer some questions regarding policing. So those are some of the new things that we have updated in that. And then we're going to, the next recommendation that we want to update is find ways to educate the public on the role of police officers, such through a citizens academy. We'll be hosting Citizens Police Academy starting tomorrow night at through November 22nd. And this past summer, we did host a junior police academy, which was filled to capacity, actually over capacity. We made, you know, some exceptions to get additional people in. And then emphasize training on mental health issues, threshold inquiries, de-escalation. All of our officers have completed de-escalation, mental health techniques for first responders. De-escalation has been emphasized in every use of force training scenario that we do, and we do train multiple times a year on this. Training tactics include verbal communication, slowing down the pace of incidents, warnings, waiting out a person, creating distance and cover, and calling in additional resources to assist. Since to the summer, the community, we have our community outreach program and our embedded clinical social worker. We've had outreach and contacts in excess of 66 different times. And just actually today, I received an email from a family member of a party that Officer David Forte has been assisting, and he couldn't say how much it's meant to him, his family, of the work that we're doing with his his family member to assist them through the struggles. And David has been such a great asset for our community and the outreach program. And you can see the difference in terms of us responding to critical incidents in terms of people suffering from mental health, because there's always constant communication. I mean, it's not, we can't force them to, but a lot of people have been willing and accepting of of Officer Forte's approach, working with the social worker and the Health Department in town. It's been a really a great collaborative effort, but you can see the difference, and it's making quite an impact for our you can see the difference and it's making quite an impact for our residents. And you know, I think our approach to mental health is, you know, what we've done with the CIT and you know, mental health first aid and the outreach program is really probably one of the more thorough programs that are around in police departments because it's something that we know how important it is and the stress that it not only causes for the people that were responding and their families, but for our offices because it puts them in very difficult situations and I think we go above and beyond the approach and you know, it's hopefully something that we can expand on. If we find, you know, we need additional resources and the town has always been very acceptable and helping in us getting the resources we need. Threshold inquiry. We've, not only is that going to be addressed in the annual in-service training in the spring, we will also address the department training this fall and winter. And again, de-escalation is in every use of force and scenario based training that we do. And for an example, we we had officers respond to a party that had attempted suicide. And our officers waited and talked to the person for thirty to forty minutes before they were able to get that party to come out and take them to the critical care facility that he needed to. And I know that's a lot different response that would have happened when I first came on. Because you know, we just not something we were really prepared for, but we have done a lot of work in that area. And I can go over, so our in-service training, which is mandated the Mass Police Training Council in service for this year. So all officers will be required to take classes that responding to emergencies involving mentally ill, cultural competency, CPR first responder, mass gatherings, de-escalation, use of force, legal updates, human trafficking, officer wellness series, mental wellness, wellness, officer wellness series, critical incident, stress management, and officer wellness series, suicide prevention, question, persuade and refer. The post commission. So implement all local components of the new state police reform and laws and additional guidance is made available. The post commission members have been approved and we're starting to receive some correspondence from post. Probably the most relevant one is in terms of I'd say internal affairs and discipline as of September, any internal affairs investigative materials or complaints that we get, we have to send into the post commission. We haven't had to have to do that yet. I'm not sure how their response is going to be, but as of now, we're mandated to do that and there's a place for us to send it to. The use of force, we have updated and all offices have reviewed the new use of force policy, which is consistent with the language required by legislation. So basically what we did is we took the the verbiage that was used in the legislation in terms of a use of force policy because the model policy is not out. We've incorporated all that language into our use of force policy. So it's as we feel it's it's as up to date as we can with the legislation and as soon as the model policy does come out, we will make any additional changes based on the model policy, but we feel that it's pretty, it's pretty close to where it's going to be when they send that policy out. But we want to make sure we got that language in there as soon as possible. And we've also, I'm working with the updated school resource officers memorandum of understanding and and policy, just the changes to reflect post. I'm working with Superintendent Gudicant on that and will be presenting to the Needham School Committee later this month. And
Whenever you're done.
Sure.
Go ahead. Absolutely. Thanks for being here, both of you. And so I guess my question is, do we have any idea when the sample policy will be released? And then as I'm looking down to what you just said about assigning a lieutenant to monitor the post compliance, what does that imply? Like, you know, how does that? How does that work that they're monitoring, but what is the process, I guess?
So with the post commission, there's certain mandates that they're requiring some of them be in place by December, some of them be in place by July of next year. So the lieutenant is also working on policies, but is working on post compliance to make sure that we're keeping up to date in terms of deadlines that we have to meet. And it's it's easier that way if we have one person in charge of that. So if any changes comes out that we can update those policies as needed. I do not have a timeframe on when that model policy comes out. But we did, you know, there have been some policies in the South, the Mass Chiefs Association and some other chiefs from the the city chiefs. So we've taken all that incorporated and we think it's the closest thing at this point that will be relevant to the policy sent out by post. And it's posted on, we posted that new policy on the website as well.
Okay. And then, yep, and then going a little bit further, hasn't been updated yet, but it still says that the board, select board is serving as an oversight body of Needham Police Department until post commission role is defined. So has that still not happened? The commission has not been defined as far as the role?
It has, but all I can say now is what we've been, we've been instructed to do is that we do have any internal affairs investigations as oversight, we have to send it into the post commission.
Okay.
And how they break that down and and deal with it and get back to us, I'm not sure of that process at this time.
So how does our, how do we, I guess, factor into that? So you're sending it to the post commission? Are are we in included in that still in some capacity or is it still just going to the
If we have an internal affairs investigation, I will make the town manager aware of that investigation. And if it's appropriate, we'll afford that information.
Okay.
Good for now.
So we get to that one. All right, the five minutes hiring. So one of them is creating the dashboard. We have compiled that for eighteen, nineteen and twenty. We just offered up the data analyst position to a party who accepted that position. And we hope that she's going to be in place the beginning of November. And this is somebody that comes with a lot of experience in data analysis with the Drug Enforcement Administration. So this is somebody who has a lot of experience of breaking down numbers and facts and and so forth and putting them into certain categories and breaking that down for their investigations and operations. So this is somebody that's going to come to us with a lot of experience and I think ability to work with us to help create that dashboard and maybe add some different things and maybe, you know, shape it up to what we think that the town wants.
Yes, I know we previously discussed, you know, waiting to hire somebody for that position. And we had a conversation, I believe, last time you were here, instead of annually to consider doing it monthly. And I think that would be more appropriate for the community and for the town if we have somebody in that role that's going to be solely working on that. And I know you had said before that it's kind of a lot to have somebody else in the force that's not dedicated to this role to do something like that. So I just want to push for more of a monthly update instead of a yearly, if that's something that we're going to be pushing to hire someone for directly for that role.
Sure. I mean, I think that's something we'll definitely look at. If it's not monthly, maybe it's quarterly. Depending on the amount of information that's out there, but it's something that I think we need to get somebody in place and kind of see what they're comfortable with or how it rolls out. I just don't have a lot of background in that. So I think it's something that's definitely open for discussion, but you know, if it's something that we do quarterly or monthly or or
So annually, okay. So follow back up after they get adjusted because they're not starting until November or you said November?
November.
Okay, yeah. So, okay, so we'll follow back up.
November fourteenth.
Okay. All right.
You know, I know one of the things we talked about doing it monthly is if you you have certain incidents that happen, then numbers, you know, because it's a small number, but that it might look like it's a huge increase when you actually it's not when you take it and when you look at it on a year basis. So it's something that we have to keep in mind and we want to look at and make sure that you know, we're getting the information out there without it looking like it's different than it really is.
Right. And I think even if it's monthly and doing that, if we just speak to it and we have the the verbiage to kind of say, this is what's happening, I think that'll be fine. Even though it may on the small scheme look like it's this huge, you know, difference. If we're laying it out and being intentional about what we're saying, I I believe as somebody that lives in the community would understand that, you know, and I hope all of us would. But we'll see.
Right.
I I think you have to make it so that, and we do the same with COVID, when you track it and you want to make sure that that block of data is actually going to represent something and maybe statistically it is too small to do month. But I think we'd leave it up to you to try to find, I think yearly, you're right, is you know, too much. But what is, what is the happy medium between that to give us relevant data instead of these peaks and valleys that don't make a lot of sense?
I think it's it's a process of just kind of get everything in place and seeing how it rolls out and then making adjustments a- as we go along.
Great.
Let's have her start first.
Mary Ann?
And I would just say I support kind of finishing out this year the way that we've been doing it rather than at this point trying to catch up on ten months. But if we could start thinking about it fresh when we get to a fresh year, that seems like a good approach.
Agreed. All right, next.
Threshold inquiries, we talked briefly about it. The NPD's use of force policy doesn't require the officer to report handcuffing of compliant individuals. However, the threshold inquiry policy does require the reporting of every investigative detention to include the identity of the person stopped and all important facts relevant to the incident. We've also, we've also added the special reporting feature to all incident reports. So every time an officer completes an incident report, they'll be required to to check off a box that indicates if the person was handcuffed or not, so that we can actually now go in and run a record of that to to get the the total number. So in addition to the MPTC annual criminal law and criminal procedure updates training, the topic of threshold increase was addressed in annual in-service training this spring. As mentioned before, we, that's something we're going to do again this fall and winter. The eyewitness identification. That policy is under review. And one of the questions that was brought up during the Tidwell report was the use of RMV photos to identify suspects. The issue that we face sometimes with putting a photo array together is that the person doesn't have any other photos than the RMV. But it's also only used as a last resort and other issues or other evidence would be needed to to go forward. And that would be a requirement of the district attorney's office as well. So when we send a report over, they'd have to determine probable cause. And a lot of it would have to be based on more than just the photo array itself.
A quick question.
Yes, Marcus.
Yeah, going back to use of force and handcuffing, as far as the dashboard, is that going to be one of the things that's added in there? You might have said that, but I was trying to find where I was.
No, I didn't say, but yes, it will be.
Okay, all right, that's good.
It, the one thing to just remember is anybody that's arrested is handcuffed. So we'll probably break it up to
Intention, yeah.
Unarrested and so forth.
Okay.
Right. Training appropriate investigative method. So follow up investigation. This follow up investigations, we addressed the policy, it was updated and it was issued to all officers in August. Courtesy to the public. Obviously, I'm committed to ensuring that all our officers are courteous and respectful to everybody that they deal with. The rules and regulations for this request, we updated that as well and issued it to all of our officers. We also addressed for the officer's identification. That was issued again and reviewed by all officers in August. Same with the officer's identification badge number. The rules and regulations for this again was in August, so we did all those in the same timeframe. Also in internal affairs policy, articulation of the standard of proof. So I've reached out to the Mass Chiefs Legal to receive some feedback on this because the articulation and the standard of proof when you're dealing with an officer and I think it was recommended that the preponderance of the evidence, which is to be found responsible, that's fifty one percent and I did review Cambridge's internal affairs policy. It did not have that standard in there, the preponderance of the evidence, more specific and articulable facts. And I am waiting on some guidance from post because last correspondence I did have, there was an indication that the preponderance of the evidence would be enough to send it in for review of certification, but that there'd be a much higher standard to revoke the certification of a police officer. So that kind of works in the way that we do with all people that are involved in incidents that the probable cause is fifty one percent. And then it goes over to court and they establish if there's probable cause to go forward, but the standard of proof is beyond a reasonable doubt. So that seems to correlate with what we're doing. So I'm trying to find the the right verbiage for that and waiting back on some correspondence from legal.
Okay.
Is there anyone that has different percentages or is it, is it fluctuate? Or is that how it is standard across, say, the nation? Or is it something that is what's present in Massachusetts?
So there are, there are, it's kind of split. So there are the departments have preponderance of the evidence and then there are the departments have specific and articulable facts to determine if the officer, you know, did violate a policy or so forth. You know, it's a lot of times if you look at, if somebody comes in and and has an issue and complaint, it, a lot of times it's, it could be he said, she said, and that's fifty percent. So it's a pretty low standard. So I want to make sure that we're doing what's right for everybody involved because, you know, with this whole certification process for police officers, I, we just don't know what's going to happen going forward. So I want to make sure that everything is in place that we we are able to investigate the things, but that if there is an issue that we have the right guidance going forward to make sure that we can make a determination. That's, you know, relative to the post commission.
Thank you.
Publish, one of the, publish the names of rank and role and training of all NPD employees. All the officers' ranks and divisions are listed on the website. And we're going to make us, you know, a summary of all of our training that'll be on our annual report. I think that's the best way to do it because we do have a lot of training. And officers, you know, do a lot of, you know, we have mandatory training for all our officers. And then there are some specialized training. So I think in order to do that, we can put that on the annual report. Which I think will be the best case scenario going forward for that. Then we've talked about the use of force policy. Mental health, I think we've covered enough.
Yes.
And the SROs, I think is I think we've, we've spoken about the SROs and there's some information in there from Dr. Gudicant regarding RSROs. And I think the last thing we'll touch on is they should be considered becoming a credit department. It's been a goal of department to participate in the accreditation process through the Mass Police Accreditation Commission, so be a credit through the Mass Police Commission. And it's not national, but it's just mass and that's what the departments in Massachusetts do. Because the laws vary and vary across the United States in terms of, you know, you know, search and seizure and so forth and thresholds. So that's something that we're we're looking to do. But part of that process, the station and the holding facility and so forth is something that we would not have passed at the time. So coming up in January, February, the new station will alleviate a lot of that. So we've assigned the lieutenant to begin the accreditation processes in two stages. There's a certification process, which is the first step. And then you move on to the second step, which is accreditation. And that's something that we going to proceed with and and deal with as we get into the new station and beyond. But it is something that takes a lot of time. And it's really something that we're going to have to dedicate a lieutenant and probably a sergeant or a police officer to to deal with because it's something that initially has to be done on a full time basis because if not, you're going to be spinning your wheels trying to keep up and to meet those standards. So it's a, it's a difficult process, but I think we'll, we'll be able to to meet that goal.
Great. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for all the work and updates that you've given us. Just before I turn it over for questions, I I did see about the Needham Police Citizens Academy and you have Um just before I turn it over for questions, I, I did see about the Needham Police Citizens Academy and you have a nice little uh agenda here uh going through week six. Can you just describe a little bit who that's tailored to and how the signups are and, you know, what you're looking to accomplish?
Sure. So I, I think the big thing was um when we did this to set it up to things that one, that we want, we want the community to know breakdown of our officers and kind of what their individual responsibilities. And then also dive a little bit deeper into um what they do, how they do it, why they do it. What laws might be in place to guide them and they do it and why certain things are done in certain reason. But then also, there's a process of putting um these, the, the students and kind of real-life situations where they're going to see that this is the process we do, that they're going to have to make decisions in terms of the Milo, that they'll have to make decisions in real time. And, you know, there's one where we're going to take them through some accident investigation, but we're also going to let them run the radar and see how, you know, that the radar will capture the speed of a vehicle from three hundred yards away. So that to show that, hey, listen, it's not the car goes by, we get a speed that coming down West Street, for example, as it comes down the hill, we get at the top of the hill. So we'll show you that, how that process works and that we're going to actually break down motor vehicle stops in the parking lot. So they're getting, get an idea how an officer comes from, you know, goes, how they park kind of and how they approach the car and what they might see and what they might not see. Um so it's going to give them a real-life look into uh the difficulties of this job and um, you know, that you have to make decisions sometimes that um under a lot of stress and a lot of pressure and not with all the relevant information at the time. But we also want them to know that like I've said before about the enforcement side, there is a portion of that that we do, but we're going to get a really good look into all the community things that we do. In terms of outreach and getting, helping people with services and and helping the members that uh of our community that are in need and that are struggling with different things that we're there to help them as well.
The human side, for lack of a better word.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, uh discussion.
Yeah.
Marcus.
Just a question on that, and I know we discussed it before, um I, the idea of Zoom or whatever it may be, but I think because live action things that are happening, people may not be recorded. Um as far as presentations for these different topics, for the people that were not able to attend this for one reason or another, whether it be in like a PowerPoint form or something, we'll be able to kind of just kind of see how things went or to take a look at, um would that be available for the public or a possibility? As the weeks go on or maybe a wrap-up that kind of summarizes each week in some capacity and I think that'd be a good a good use of not only doing it in person, but making it more accessible to people that may not have been able to sign up or get there.
I'll look at that. I, I, you know, we're trying to, to get through the program the first time. It's the first time. So there's a lot going on. We're using numerous members of the department to do that.
Right.
So I'll take, I'm going to be there probably most weeks in the beginning. So I'll take a look at if it's something that we can put out a short you know, some information on, then we'll do that.
Okay. Yeah, I just think about planning and presenting. I'm sure there's going to be people that will have, you know, come with materials to kind of use and whatnot.
Good. Mary Ann.
Thank you, Chief. Um I appreciate all the updates and I know that you've been working hard on all these different parts from um the various recommendations this year. And, and I do know that we'll be a better force because of it. So that's a, that's a good thing. Um I'm curious, I don't know, um one of the meetings that's been taking place, for example, has been with the one with the Needham Housing Residence. Is there anything that you learned? Or that, that somebody came back and articulated from one of those meetings that was a wow, hadn't, hadn't realized that before, hadn't thought about that? I'm just curious about.
Yeah, I've been to both. Um and I, and I think, I think the big thing that we've learned is that, you know, they want to see us, they want us to see our presence, they want us to be out on foot, they want us engaging with um the children and the residents and um, you know, obviously COVID put uh a stop to what we were doing prior, but we're getting back into that mode. But I think, I think there's a, a lot of room there for collaboration that they're looking. Because I think sometimes they feel like they're on the outskirts of town sometimes and they might not necessarily be for less, you know, lack of a better word, part of the community sometimes. And um we want to be one of those agencies that we can if we can bridge the gap somehow and provide some, you know, assistance in any manner to get them, you know, so that they feel that they're part, at least with the police department. And then if we can bring in some other agencies and so forth to assist, then we'll do that. But you know, it, some of the, the, the questions were, you know, it was a little bit difficult at times, but I think I think we both have a common goal that um, you know, we're all part of the co- the community. We're part of the solve, you know, we're there to help and, and solve the problems and we're part of that. And it's a collaborative effort and they're willing and they're, they're reaching out and I think um you know, as, as we go forward, that we'll be, we'll be a bigger part of um of that community because you know, I said this when we first started the coffee with the cop up at the senior center and the first time we up, we haven't been up there in a while and it was a lot of complaints and this birthday speeding and doing all this and but as we continued, it was more of just, you know, conversation and, and talking about different things. Yeah, there might be some issues that they want to discuss, but they felt comfortable just talking to us. They were glad to see us. And, you know, we hope that that's, you know, where, where we're going with those, these meetings as well. But we bring down, um we have our Needham Housing Liaison, our Community Outreach Officer, our Clinician, our Community Service Officer was down there as well. So, and myself. So we had five or six people that are going to go down to these meetings and um, and I think it's a representation of, of majority of the police department and, and that we're there to help.
Thank you. Um and so I appreciated the conversation earlier about thinking about, you know, the dashboards and I have quarterly, Marcus is at monthly, so we're all at more frequency than annually. And, and we'll get there. But one of the other things that that particular recommendation made me think about is we've talked a few times about how the police department, how the technology maybe doesn't support your operations as well as they should. And one of the other examples that I was thinking of was the um, the example of the call with the dog, right, that came in and then you guys are moving and the call got lost. So, so to me, it's all the do it once and have it in the system. So it's tracked and it sounds like that's not the kind of system that we have right now. So I'm hoping, I, I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, as, as we're looking forward to the extent that there are pieces of technology that can get the force to doing it once so that it is tracked and is not as onerous for you to create these statistics and create, be able to learn from what the operations really are um to improve them, that, that's something that I'm hoping that will all be attuned to and that we'll be able to support as we're looking out. And I, I just don't know what's available in there, but I know there's a perception in general with police departments across the US that they've been under-resourced in some ways from a technology perspective to help move the, the you know, do the business of just doing the work of the department. So I don't know what's out there, but um I'm hoping somebody knows what's out there. Um the, the last note that I had, you know, was just thinking about this customer service aspect. And I suppose that this is something that's almost town-wide. I don't know whether there's, you know, like the press gaming equivalent that we have in hospitals, right, for just looking at municipal customer service and how we think about that. I don't think it's a top priority for us, but, but I don't know that if there's something out there, just if we see it and, and track that. But I was thinking about that as well. Um I know we have so many interactions with people and some of them are fabulous and some of them are less than fabulous. Uh we learn from all of them. So but thank you for all the
Thank you, Mary Ann. Dan?
Yeah, I'm um appreciative of, of, of all the work that's gone, gone into this. Um and the fact that you built on it uh monthly. I think some of my comments and questions may actually not be for you, but just because this is the subject. I mean, this is a this is a hard time to be in your, in your line of work. It doesn't do you any good to come here and tell us that. We had to find the right way to voice that to our own public in the way that um that they can understand and appreciate. And they'll push back on us, but we'll, we'll have to, then we'll find out how we're supposed to communicate. I think in particular some of the criticism that I've seen from people who are very educated and involved members of the community, who have said that the town has not taken the, the, the issue, perceived issues with policing here or nationally seriously and that we've tried to broom that or, or sweep that under the rug either in specific cases that we've dealt with or with policies generally. We know that the exact opposite of that is true, that um that we recognize that it's difficult work and we support the people that work for us, but you, Chief, and, and, and the officer and, and the, and officers and all the staff have worked really to listen, to understand, to find areas where we need to improve, which we have identified. And you're reporting to us every sixty days and it's a lot of work and we're posting it on our website. And I, the people that are, I talked about at the top of this paragraph are not, they're not, they don't see that or acknowledge it. And this is an issue for us. I don't know exactly what, doesn't necessarily mean issue, a lot of press releases, but we have to find ways to communicate to our own constituents. I, I'm thinking of the analogy, there are plenty of people that complain about individual things that happened at the school department. But if you ask around, people say, yeah, Needham has pretty good schools. And I think the same is true of all of our public services and the police department in particular. We have to find a way to, to address that, we as a board. How many sworn officers do you have now and do you have any vacancies?
Currently, we have six vacancies.
Okay. And how many on staff do you, how many sworn officers on staff do you have right now?
We're, so we're at forty-seven.
Forty-seven, okay. That's that's good. I have one really, the, the report is really detailed, very helpful. And you've given a good summary, but there's a lot, it's a lot more here. I have kind of, this is a small suggestion, which is I assume you're going to continue to use this format going forward and build on it. I, each, the, a casual reader might not understand or might have trouble seeing that each item begins with a recommendation, the status of that as in June, and then an update paragraph and then continues all the way through. I would simply number all of the recommendations. There's about thirty-five of them and it shows that these are, each one of those is a work area for you guys. That, and, and, and the progress is, is, is reported there. I would just do that um go, going forward. The issue about the, the statistics, I, I guess I would do it, I, I, I think the annual makes sense. And then, once you've got another quarter of results, add them. And I think once you get your statistician in and the data is going in, you should then off of that be able to run it every month or whenever you do the updates. Then run the year-to-date to that point. I think that, you know, a one month can be off, but once you've got a quarter and you're building a year-to-date stats, it would, it would show. The, 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 the question of, of the standard of proof, it would, there, as I would understand it, and I could be mistaken, but specific articulatable facts can actually be a lower standard than preponderance of the evidence. Because when it's two versions, you don't get to a preponderance unless you decide one of them is more believable than the other. Whereas specific facts can be something just that there's enough to warrant taking an action here. Which might be less than knowing that you've got everything. So I think you've got some difficult choices. I think the reference to using the Massachusetts accreditation makes a lot of sense. My layperson's understanding of this is that Massachusetts is probably well ahead of a lot of states in, 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 in addressing these issues and that although there'll be differences, probably Massachusetts will be higher than any initial national standard get, that gets implemented. I stand up, I'm willing to be corrected on that, but that would be my
Massachusetts tends to be ahead of the curve. And you know, there's a concerted effort in Massachusetts law enforcement to get it right and to do it right. Um and we have been doing that for some time and um, you know, I think where this mass accreditation, like you said, is w- we tend to be ahead of the curve, having been down at the FBI Academy in um Virginia with departments from all over the world. It's numerous times it was revealed by instructors that Massachusetts tends to, to try and get it right and is ahead of the curve uh compared to national.
I know that, for example, when you see these cases of, of a, of an officer who has been dismissed for one from one department, can turn up in another, in another department in that state or in another state. I, I think that my impression is we have safeguards against that here that
We do. So we, we do background checks and uh part of that is a uh review of the personnel file uh at the other police departments. So there have been cases where we've had officers trying to lateral over um and the information uh during the background and from resources within that department have made us stay away from those officers. Um the certification process is something that the Massachusetts Chief of Police have been pushing for seven to ten years. It's something that we wanted, um we encouraged. And it really didn't come to fruition until um the new post reform came out. So that's something that uh we support wholeheartedly.
And then one thing that's not in the recommendations, or we call that specifically, but I think it, oh, other than, than our, our question about it, of, of our, of our collective bargaining goal of exiting civil service is I do, I believe there's a need for us to work to, to have greater diversity in our, in our, in our force. And I know that we're really limited under the civil service system, that we've set a goal of bargaining ourselves out of that and that, and that that's something that, that, that's engaged that's all the time. But it may be that, say, as we're looking through how the post commission or further legislative action or what other, or what experience of other departments, if there are um opportunities that we might have to get good diversity hires that will improve our ability to, to um provide service to the community. Apart or parallel to the thing, the work we're trying to do in collective bargaining, that would be, that might be, that might be a help.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? I will close then and just tell you, or you already know, and Dan hinted on it. It's a lot of work to you know, we're looking at ten pages here and the resources that you have. And I think you talked about the vacancies that you have, but I think we're talking to police officers, look at the academy and people, low numbers, right, of people who want to step in the shoes of, of the people on the force. So I think as a community, we appreciate all your work and I think the way we appreciate your work is the work you're putting in and showing us that we're moving towards a goal and kind of tirelessly moving towards that, showing up in the community. Leadership, I will tell you, Chief, I've spoke with a lot of officers at events you go to when they're crossing people on the street or they, you know, they're around. And they won't tell you this, but they said the leadership of the department to get us through COVID and these other issues that have come up has been exceptional. So, and they're not just telling me to tell me, you know, it's, it's unasked. So and I think you've shown that in, in the Zoom meetings we've had and everything we've done moving forward. We talked about mental health, you know, drug use. I talked to parents, I talked to people in the community and you are turning into that the contact person that they really rely on and trust for that. And I know the drug issue is not going to go away and we had the sheriff in here and, and the problem just seems to grow and grow. So spoken with students, resource officers, has been a huge help to a couple of them. And then in preparation for this meeting, you know, one thing I do, I look at the police log, right? And I go over past couple months that you've had to deal with and there've been homicides in there and there've been a, you know, vehicle crash that's, you know, unfortunately uh was fatal and, and things of that nature, chasing someone on foot that could have ended very badly. So all those things that you do uh are just very much appreciated and as we move towards these goals and you're going to update us and with the dashboard and everything else, it's just, it's appreciated by this board. So I want to thank you coming in. Thank you for updating us and we'll look forward to the, the next update.
Well, thank you and, and I appreciate it. And I think having this look at, you know, what we do and how we do it and having the community input, it is going to make us a better police department because we want everyone to, to trust, have trust in us and be able to come to us and having a, a deeper look into what we do is is important for self-reflection and, and making us serve the community better. So we're appreciative of that. So we're appreciative of that as well, and appreciative of the support of the board and the town.
Great. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda, outdoor dining policy and alcohol license fees. James Hulson, how are you?
Hi, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
So you're here on a further discussion that we had at last meeting with some questions that were brought to you, and I know you're aware of those, so the floor is yours to speak about those changes that we have in our document.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll walk through the outdoor dining piece, and I just want to flag, if we could save a second part of the conversation for Amy, just to talk to liquor licensing fees for next year. So since your last meeting, just to walk through, we did make some changes to the board's outdoor dining policy proposal, and I can walk through those briefly. In section 2.24, we clarified the accessibility requirements, which is that the sidewalk needs to be 48 inches, but the passage, the pathway can be 36 inches. So we've clarified this, that and this. In section 2.9, we tried to add more clarity for applicants to say, even though the default season is April 1 to October 31st, that the board would entertain proposals outside of that calendar by the applicant, and those are the criteria by which the board would consider it. And then on page five, it's section four, the fees. So we made two changes here. The first in section 4.1 would take the $25 application fee, which is more an administrative fee, and put it towards the overall licensing fee. So if somebody were to be approved, they'd get a credit for that initial $25. And in 4.2, similarly, if an applicant is trying to put outdoor dining on a sidewalk and on a public parking space, we wouldn't charge them for both. And so we would waive the $100 for the sidewalk fee instead of making it additive. So in terms of those fee changes, really the range that we'd be looking at for a restaurant is somewhere between $100 if they were sidewalk only and $750 if they were three parking spaces plus the sidewalk. That's the total range of the fees for kind of the possibilities. There was a good discussion at your last meeting about the context for the fees. And so in your agenda packet, there's a town cost estimate. I'm happy to walk through it in any level of detail, but I just would say from a high level perspective, the fees we're proposing are not at all revenue generating, and we can anticipate on average that if what is proposed is passed, the fees in total would not cover the town's anticipated costs. It's really just an attempt to balance, get closer, balance that there, the town is providing a public asset for exclusive use by one business, but obviously that outdoor dining provides a public benefit as well. So it's really just a balance on that front.
And I know it's a tough balancing act, and you know, you speak with retail establishments, and you know, everyone, you don't want to pit anyone against each other, but they do look at this and say they're using the public, what is fair so that they, you know, they can get what they need, but also not somewhat take advantage of, you know, we need help too. So I think you're right, the fee is what's put in there for that, to try to get with some balancing act, but that is difficult, obviously, to achieve. We're not going to make everyone happy with that. Any discussion, Marcus?
Yeah, I know we discussed ARPA funds and how they may be available. Have we come, I don't know if we have come to a conclusion about, I guess, how much someone is able to apply for within the grant? And, you know, there's only a certain amount of years I know we're able to use the funds. So just what that looks like, and, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll be coming back to you.
Okay. I just want to, if it was discussed. Okay.
Discussion? Mary?
So one of the things that I've asked further to the discussion we had before were, what would it mean if we wanted to consider having our default season run from April 1 through the end of November? I just, it seems to me that, given the way the weather is, right, that that does constitute actually an outdoor eating season or a possibility for one. And so then the question is, does that make sense to have as a default if people wanted it? I do think the ability for somebody to come in and ask for something that's different, that's helpful, but it's not clear to me whether making that one change would also be something that makes sense for everybody. And then I know I had asked, I don't know if Amy's been able to find out anything about snow plowing, just to try to understand what the situation was with snow plowing. I believe that Newton had their outdoor dining in the streets for the winter, so they would have had to deal with it at least a couple of occasions. And I don't know what the lessons learned were.
Sure. I did speak with somebody from Newton today who confirmed that they will be ending their outdoor dining season on December 1st of this year. That going through the winter last year did pose some significant challenges for snow removal, and the DPW has requested that the season end on December 1st.
Okay.
With the caveat being that if the weather is nice, they may be able to extend it a little bit at a time, but certainly we don't always have the luxury of knowing too far in advance if the nor'easter is going to be coming out of nowhere. So certainly there's, there's that as far as, you know, the option of removing it should a snow event be predicted.
And then one of the other questions that I asked, I think for this board that I would like us to consider that came on a revised sheet, is whether, in fact, we would make the decision now to move this season's outdoor dining to end, and whether it's November 30th or December 1st, I don't know what the right date should be. But that actually is important, because our next meeting will be right before, in theory, people should be picking up their tables and chairs for the year. So there are restaurants in town who are worried about whether they need to obtain storage for their outdoor furniture right now, or whether they have a little bit more lead time that can be used outdoors. So I think sending that signal would be an important signal for this board to consider.
Right. And I would support that, and I think looking, maybe you can help us with this, on 2.9, is that the only, page three, only section where the date, if we change that date, that would suffice? If we change that from October 31st to November 30th?
Or December 1.
Or December 1st is fine with me. If that's the direction we want to go to, I'm not saying we're, but that would be, I think, the area, right? The dining season shall be April 1 to December 1st. And then I would say, considerations, yeah, I think that would be where to do it.
I believe that is the only place that the calendar is outlined.
Right. And maybe the select board could authorize, you know, from April later than December 1, based on the considerations that you spoke about. But I, I think would make sense to extend that date to make a longer seasons for them, and I think would be practical for us. So let's discuss that topic first before we delve into anything else. Marcus?
Yeah, as far as that topic, I'm all in for letting them in their restaurants, you know, owners and business owners kind of know that sooner than later makes sense. So they're not waiting until our next meeting if that's something we can talk about, discuss, and vote on now. I think it makes more sense, and I believe we're all in favor of the benefit that it's been for our town, as we've all kind of said, you know. So yeah, I'm definitely more in favor of doing that sooner than later, so they're not having to wait.
Dan?
About the, are you on the limit of the?
Yes, to December 1.
No, I'm fine.
And also this year to move it to November 30.
Yeah, and your research on that is very helpful.
Thank you. And with the caveat, of course, if there's a snow emergency, then you can address, and it can come after, they had to December 1 if they want to extend it.
Mr. Chair, could I just point out for the minutes, the calendar is also reflected on page seven, on, in appendix A, so we could change.
Yes, okay, wherever, I should say wherever it's, we don't have the words for the time, wherever it's noted, but I appreciate that, the intent of that, okay. Discussion on any other aspects of this proposal?
I think one thing, it's a great piece of work, and it really is a lot, like a lot of things, it's a lot harder than it might look to some. So thank you for all the work and attention to detail. And this is some, yes, it's said something that people really enjoy, and it's good for the businesses in the community. I particularly appreciate the work that you did on trying to calibrate where we are on the fees and the rationale for that, because I think over time it becomes important. Businesses never want to pay anything more than they have to, they're trying to make the profit. We had to decide what's fair. I think the idea that it's a measurable contribution, but not aim to try to recover the full cost make, actually makes sense. And the reason for that difference is, we're committing public property to private use, but it isn't just because the private entities are paying us for it, although they're required to contribute. It's that we perceive that there's a public interest in doing that. And I think that's because the real value of this stuff isn't the lost parking revenue, which, that space is, is, would cost a lot to replicate any other way. And we're not, and it's assumed, well, the street's just there, who cares? There's a lot more to it than that. The rest of the public doesn't get to use that space, we're committing it to this purpose. And, and the way that you've thought that out, I think is really helpful.
Great. Thank you, Dan. And before we circle back to everything here, but, you know, but to hear from you on the, you're here for the fees, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So as we begin discussions on setting the alcohol license fees for calendar year 2022, we're looking to the select board for guidance. As you know, the board voted to reduce the on-premise alcohol beverage fees by 50% in 2021. And based on my recent conversations with local restaurant owners and recent news coverage, including an article that was just in the Boston Business Journal last week titled Restaurants Hope for a Bright 2021 But Face a Bleak Winter Instead. I don't have the confidence that restaurants are going to have a normal, meaning a pre-COVID first quarter, and they'll be in recovery mode for quite some time. So a reduction in fees would certainly help our struggling restaurants, but we're looking for guidance on what you're hoping to see. And just as a point of reference, there was some research done, Miles Tucker, the Town Manager's Office, reached out to several communities to inquire what they are doing. And just for your reference, Dedham, Lexington, Westwood, Norwood, Natick, Wellesley, and Mallham, they are not planning to cut their rates for this, next year. So if you wanted to ask what other communities are doing, I thought that would be helpful to share that information, but we're looking for guidance from you all.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Mr. Chair, I am, well, I am concerned and dismayed at the, at the news that all of our communities around us have determined that they're not decreasing fees. I have to say that the outlook right now is not good, I think, for restaurants. And I think, I think the restaurants are a benefit, and having them leave leaves a big hole that we then have to fill in terms of foot traffic and storefronts and lots of other things. And it's easier to keep an entity going than it is to start from zero. So I would be in favor of another relaxing. I recognize it's, you know, I recognize it's not ideal, but, but they are really anchors of a lot of our downtown, and they really generate a lot of other business for other, for other businesses. And with that, I think we need to do what we can to support those entities, and then we'll reassess again. But we're not out of this yet, so.
Thank you, Mary. And when you're talking about license, and I see there's a suggested motion, you would still be looking to keep the fees for the, you know, outdoor seating in place, but you're looking to just waive the alcohol fees, is that correct?
Actually, I'll clarify, it's in the reverse. So the motions are all related to outdoor dining specifically. We were not going to have you vote on liquor license fees tonight, we just want your feedback, and we can come back to you at your next meeting with a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't have any of those to read right now, so.
Okay. I guess I would just say, I would like to, if we could, table the licensing fee for the cost, you know, for the spaces for now, because I do see a benefit to balance with the retail establishment. That's not saying that next meeting, I would just like to get an idea of, there are a lot of restaurants, what the actual impact to the town would be as a total if we waived all those fees if we count up the spaces. But I'm in support, I guess, of relaxing in a future meeting, you know, alcoholic license, we did that last year, right? To do that again, and I'd like to hear from the board, you know, to give them that. But I, I think for now, the licensing fee for these spaces is sound, but I'd like to think about it and see what the impact could be for the town. Does that make sense to move forward in that direction? I'll open that up for the board. Mary Ann?
So your proposal is that we, I guess I'm not clear on whether there's something that has to be voted tonight. Is there something that has to be voted tonight?
I'm sorry, I would just say on the second motion, I would wait about waiving the fees, but I would support, yes, absolutely. I would support, you know, the authorizing extension and of course, license policy, but I think if we want to put that on a future agenda item, number two, waiving these fees for public spaces, because I think there is a benefit to that, but you can speak to that.
So when are, when are these license applications due? Aren't they due fairly soon? Or how does that process start, and what's the timing on it?
So we can't even put them out on the street, or we wouldn't, until town meeting approves the zoning amendment, because this is all premised on that change. And so we have time, so you certainly can wait to vote on the fee.
And have another discussion about that.
Yeah. I think the first motion to adopt the board policy and to extend what's out on the street today until November 30th are the two more timely votes.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I actually, I just had a question for the town manager, if you know, which is, when we're doing these calculate, calculations about the town's missing revenue in relation to ARPA, do we, if we got, are we in some way able to gain by these waivers or no? We're just, that's just the way it is.
I could have, Mr. Davis can speak to it, but the way the calculation works, the town's revenue is not lower than it was in the prior period, based on things like debt exclusions and water and square rates and.
Because if we could apply ARPA money to this, that would be, that would be good. But if not, no, I, I, yeah, I'm kind of following on what I said. We're embarking a public purpose here for, that's temporary in some respect, but hopefully hope, but, but it's, it's not just for the benefit of the businesses themselves, of the businesses themselves. And, and the revenue is not critical to the town, but having the strong business community makes a big difference over time, so. But I'm willing to wait as well, so thank you.
Okay. And I'm willing to have a discussion maybe with that on the alcoholic beverages as well, fees. I think that's important, and a substantial amount of money. Dan, were you asking, for example, if we had the fee in place and we waived it, whether we could recoup that for the waiving?
That was.
Yeah, I thought of that. But that's, okay, fortunately. Otherwise, we'd raise the fee really. That's not a thought of ours. Okay. Is there a motion on this agenda item?
Mr. Chair, is that a motion to approve with an amendment to?
So I have three motions in front of me. I think we talked about tabling number two, so it'll be motion number one and motion number three that I'd like to.
But motion number one is with an amendment to the date?
Yes.
For the seasonal dining?
Correct. Yes, let me clarify that.
November 30th or December 1st, whichever is the appropriate date to include.
Yeah.
Correct. So that motion would be with the change discussed for that later, Dan. Thank you for that, thank you, Mary Ann. So the first motion that the board vote to adopt, the outdoor licenses policy dated October 12, 2021, with the aforementioned amendment.
So move.
Second.
All's in favor, any discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's unanimous. And motion number three, is there a motion?
Number three is what?
That the board extends the authorization granted to the town manager by vote of June 9, 2020, to grant all local approvals necessary to allow existing local businesses to utilize outdoor seating in parking lots, on-street parking spaces, sidewalks, landscape yard areas, or other appropriate locations to provide more space to serve patrons until November 30, 2021. Such authorization remains subject to all the terms and conditions, save in the board's original. Such authorization remains subject to all the terms and conditions stated in the board's original vote. We have a motion by Ms. Cooley to that. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. And Mr. Nelson, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Chair, is it, is it the board's intent that we bring you a license fee proposal for calendar 22 with retaining the, um, lower alcohol fees for in on premises of consumption?
Yeah, I would like to see what that shapes up to look like. Yes. I think it, if we can help the businesses in that manner, uh, that will be beneficial for one more year. And other towns will then look to us to say, that's how to do it. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we will move to the warrant.
Chair, there are four articles that the board has yet to take position on, articles four, five, 11 and 12. I moved that the, uh, recommended adoption of article four.
Second.
Which is the outdoors thing.
Okay. Which the planning board discussed with us this evening. Yep. Remember motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Article five, amend zoning bylaw, Chester Street Business District Front setback. Is there a motion?
I moved that the board adopt article five.
Okay. Motion, Ms. Cooley. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Nelson, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Next. Which, uh, I don't have my. 11 and 12. Okay. We're through here. Um, article 11, we heard tonight, um, resolution concerning declaration of climate and ecological emergency. We heard from the proponents, um, and we had some discussion with them on their citizens petition. Is there a motion? From the discussion tonight, it seemed like the board would move to not recommend adoption of article 11. Is that my reading of the board stance?
I think I would be looking.
No.
May perhaps, I, and I know there are several views at the table, but maybe for purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Um, uh, what about consideration, uh, of a motion to refer the subject matter of article 11 to the select board?
That is fine, Mr. Matthews. I would support that. Is there?
Yep. And just to speak a little bit about that.
Sure. Let me get a second first. Is there a second?
I'm not offering a motion yet. I kind of want to know how people feel.
Okay.
I think, um, and it, cause it's going to be my job to report what we're proposing to do. And the reason for that would be to tell, uh, town meeting, um, that, that this board takes the, the, the issue of human caused climate change. We recognize it as a fact and we, and a serious challenge to the wellbeing of not just this community, but people all over the world. That we've initiated actions here locally, including the, our, our specific things that are listed in the warrant, as well as the climate, our climate action committee, which, um, we're getting underway this year. And that it would be the intent of the, if, if the matter is returned is, is, um, referred to the board, that we would basically be assigning that this is part of the work of the climate action committee. Um, and probably also would say that if town meeting passes as it's printed the warrant, which makes recommendations for us to, to act, that what we would expect to do is assign it for recommendations to the climate action.
Correct.
I would also, just as a kind of a procedural footnote, I think it is better to have it come, although it might require some explanation, come to this board because we're a statutory body with an obligation to report to town meeting. Whereas the climate action committee actually reports to us. And it's better to have the chain of command work the way that it's supposed to. And, uh, we will report back to town meeting in any event on, on the outcome of this. If that made sense from the point of view of the, of the, of the other board members, then I would offer it as a motion. But I guess I'd like to hear what folks think first.
Okay. And before we do that, I think you're right, Dan. It's the procedural footnote. We mentioned with the housing that, you know, the, that committee could be dissolved tomorrow and same with the climate action committee could be dissolved as well. So it does make sense to come back to this board. Uh, I'd like to hear the sense of the board on the potential motion by Mr. Matthews. Marcus?
Um, yeah. So listening to Mr. Matthews speak on this, I think it makes sense because we are the, um, the body that appoints the committee that's to handle this for this to come back to us and refer to us to kind of take it from there. Um, with the input and with the, um, if something were to be voted different on the town floor, that would just probably enforce us or have us do the thing we're already going to do as far as, you know, giving it to our, our climate action committee and then also talking about it, uh, with our board. So I agree with what Mr. Matthews said.
Thank you, Marcus. Mary Ann?
I would support a motion to refer, um, it precisely because of Dan's reasoning that, you know, if it comes back to this board, that that's what we're going to do with it as a matter of, of process. I completely appreciate the sentiment behind the, the article and, uh, what people are concerned about. But I think in very real terms that, um, this board will work with the climate committee and, um, and that's important work to go forward. So a motion to refer seems to accomplish that best.
And I would offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, that the board recommend the town meeting, uh, that we offer a motion to refer the subject matter of article 11 to the select board to report back to the next, uh, annual town meeting or sooner. And, um, that we recommend, uh, approval of that motion to by town meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, and I would just comment that I support that for all the reasons stated. And, uh, otherwise I think that this, uh, well, well-intended, uh, has those consequences that are unintended. So, um, with that, we come to the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Um, article 12, we heard from the proponent tonight regarding ADUs, um, on the citizens petition or the, uh, the willingness to increase them or the intent to increase them and relax some restrictions. There was a, a motion made or the, will be a motion made by the proponent to refer this back. Uh, we had a discussion whether or not there'll be the planning board or the committee. I think the consensus and I think the proponent agreed that the planning board can be the proper vehicle for that referring back. So, uh, how do we want to handle this? I guess we.
Mr. Chairman, in this case, I'd like to offer a motion to, uh, that the board at town meeting of, uh, offer motion and, and, and support action to refer the subject matter of article 12 to the planning board. And then if there's a second, if I could speak to that.
Sure. Let me get a second. Mr. Nelson's seconds. Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, I just, I, I really, uh, yeah, the, the planning board is the right place for this to go because ultimately this is, this is involves a proposed change to the zoning. And that's got to come from the planning board and the planning board supervises the study committee, even though there are various pointing authorities involved in it, including us. Um, I just, I'd like to emphasize as we get into this, that this is a, it's a subject in which people have a lot of goals. And I think positive aspirations for the progress that we can make. I think that the history of this is that it's been very tough when, when you really get into it. And one of the things, and I didn't mean to belabor it when we, when Mr. Mertz was here, but to say that, that, the, the, the planning board has actually worked out a pretty detailed plan for do, for doing its kind of due diligence, for lack of a better term, of, of, of fact gathering and organizing this. There are a lot of different, um, options of things that we might, that that committee might recommend or that the planning board might adopt. Um, almost every one of them has different advantages, disadvantages and challenges and trying to fit. And, and some of them conflict with each other in various ways. It may be, I don't, there was sort of an assumption that, that, that this particular change was the lowest hanging fruit in the, in, in, in the subject matter. I personally don't think that so. Now, I might be mistaken, but I'd rather have the planners, the planners who have undertaken and made this commitment to town meeting, begin that work and then we can see where we go from there. Meanwhile, we'll be fixing climate change and it will be fair.
Yeah. Too easy subjects to work on. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And I say that sarcastically, obviously. Any further discussion on Mr. Matthews' motion, uh, to agree with the proponent to refer it back? Uh, hearing none, we come to the vote. All's in favor, say aye. Aye. That is unanimous. Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Just to be clear on the record, it's a motion to refer. I'm, if the proponent agrees with us, I think that's swell.
I know, but I, it's not like we are doing something that the proponent didn't already state there's one.
No, no.
The motion is to refer. That stands on its own. Thank you. Town manager report.
Hey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had, um, one brief update. There's been, um, conversation among a mu- a number of boards in our Department of Public Works about the Flex and Field Project that, and people are very interested in that. So, um, just that we, uh, Park and Rec staff at DPW had a productive meeting with the consultant. And we should know by the end of the week, um, whether they're going to be able to, um, move that design faster so that we could get a construction estimate for an earlier town meeting. I would say, um, e- even if the best case scenario happens, everywhere we look, there are supply chain problems. And, um, you know, projects that are funded in our bid aren't being done because we can't get, um, get goods and services or labor, um, in a lot of ways. So, and as, as we have noted tonight, our pandemic is still with us. So, um, even the yes is almost yes sometimes. So, uh, but it was, it was productive and we're hoping that we'll know, um, by Friday.
Great. Thank you. And, and I know there are a lot of bottlenecks out there. I just, I'm hoping that we won't be, or you know, there won't be one actually getting to town meeting with a design money so that we can actually put it for an up and down vote, uh, for funding. And then of course we'll see where that puts us. There are, there are shortages everywhere. But I just want to move this, if we can move it along, um, as was in our capital plan. I know things happen, but I know there's a, a, a quite a bit of, from Park and Rec to this board, to, uh, to parents, to a lot of people who want to get this project done if it's feasible. Marcus?
Um, so hypothetically, if things go off without a hiccup and we kind of get things right by Thursday, the hypothetical go live, this could be done with all things considered would be, would it be spring of 23? Or would it be late fall of 22?
Spring, I would assume spring of 23 would be the earliest.
Okay. If all goes well.
If all went.
If all goes well. All right.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the side? No? Okay. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, any committee reports? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion. So moved.
All in favor, please say aye. I don't think you can discuss. All those in favor, please say aye, aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.